Thank you for your patience as we had to go over a number of topics and close session. It's my honor to call to order the Monday, November 11th, 2024 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, or we're going to begin with an invocation given by Mayor Pro Tem Hunt, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
Today, we join with those across this nation to honor the men and women who sacrificed so much to defend our freedom. Today marks the day when the guns fell silent after four long years of World War I, then called the Great War, or the War to End All Wars. That terrible war was brought to a close in large measure by the bravery and tenacity of the American soldiers who, after America entered the war in 1917, proved to be the decisive factor for victory. Armidus Day, the celebration of the end of World War I, evolved into Veterans' Day, a day to honor those who served and now serve in our armed forces. We unite in our tribute to those who have unselfishly given of themselves to our country. Although most of us will never see combat on a battlefield, we can be inspired by their sacrifice. We can live our lives in service to others with the courage and the resolve to always defend our country's values and core beliefs whenever they are under threat. The democratic ideals they fought and died for are precious and fragile and must be constantly secured. Let us go forward, inspired by their example, with renewed vigor to actively protect and defend these cherished principles. To all of our veterans, a sincere thank you for serving in the greatest military in the world, and thank you for your steadfast service to this country. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did not have an audible set up for the absence of an American flag, but glad it's here still. All right. That brings us to item four today, which is the approval of the agenda.
Put your mic on.
Yeah. Do we, before we do the approval of the agenda, I'm going to ask that Mr. Wallenweber...
John Woods was going to be here to provide an update. I think I messed up and forgot to put him on the agenda.
I think John Woods was going to be here to provide an update on the winter festival and stuff. Maybe we could add him on to the agenda.
So the mics, can you guys hear me fine? Does it sound like it's coming through the sound system?
Okay, this one...
Or is it just my dad voice taking over? Yeah, okay. So it looks like we're having a little bit of a technical issue. Does everyone, maybe everyone turn your mics on at once? Remember, we had that issue. Well, yours isn't even...
Judy went upstairs to go fix it. Oh.
Oh, this one is now on. This one is now on, I think.
Is that better? All right, thank you. We see the green lights here. We're like, what are you talking about? So this is, yep, there, now they're working. Okay, good. Thank you.
Maybe we add him just before the consent agenda.
Yeah, we can do that. So, Mr. Wallenweber, do you want to make that recommendation to whoever's the motion maker?
I would recommend that we add John Woods for an update on the Winter Carnival and some of the other projects that he's been involved in. He's going to provide an update just before, why don't we do it right after public comment, before the consent agenda?
Okay. So moved. So we have an update, or we have a motion by Commissioner Colow. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesem. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. Alls in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to item five, which is a proclamation supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. And I see the Wondoffs are here today.
I'm going to ask that they come join me here at this mic and follow. Now, for those of you who are wondering, Mr. Wondoff is a veteran and a fashionito. The answer is yes. He's very strong. So, we actually read this proclamation earlier today at the Veterans' Day ceremony, and it's programmed, you know, the county's vested in, and that we're recognizing here, but in general, recognizing the service of our veterans in our community and what we can do to show support, especially those as they work to transition back into civilian life after often long and tumultuous and turbulent and really tough appointments. So it's my honor to read this proclamation and present it to you, Mr. Wondoff. For those who don't know Mr. Wondoff, he is an amazing community volunteer. He's a veteran, and he serves on our Royal Oak Veterans Event Committee as well. So this is a proclamation designated November 4th to 11th, Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas residents of the city of Royal Oak honor and appreciate the men and women who served in the armed forces, and whereas their sacrifices have been essential in protecting our freedoms and way of life, and whereas many veterans continue to serve our community through organizations like the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, and the Navy Legion, and whereas 200,000 service members transitioned to civilian life annually with an expected 20% increase in the near future, and whereas many face high stress and increased suicide risk during this transition, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages recognition of Operation Green Light for veterans. Now therefore, dear resolve, I, Mayor Forman, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission, on behalf of the entire Royal Oak community, hereby proclaim November 4th through November 11th, 2024, as a time to honor veterans' transition to civilian life and encourage citizens to display green lights from November 4th to the 11th, 2024, as part of Operation Green Light in support of our veterans. Mr. Wondoff, thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your continued service to this community.
Once again, those who don't know me, I am the chairperson for the Royal Veterans United Committee. It's been my pleasure, it sounds like I'm yelling at you, and I'm sorry, I project. So, it's been my pleasure to serve as such for three years. I've been in the committee for four. You know, I don't know if everyone knows, but we heard the 22 March, the Veterans' Day event that went today, and the Memorial Day parade we also helped facilitate as well. So this is really great, right? So we've been lucky in our committee to not only be supportive of the city of Royal Oak, but you know, everyone part of Royal Oak too has really been super supportive. Every year, it's seen our events get bigger and bigger, and we really super appreciate it. And once again, I don't know who was here for the rug 22 March that happened on Saturday, but that resulted in raising $5,000 for the VA and mental health, several thousand pounds of food for the VA 154 home. They feed between 50 and 65 veteran families that, you know, need assistance, and we're also able to give them $1,000 of COVID-19 cards. This year was absolutely fantastic. And this year, the Operation Green Light was actually brought to us, the light actually came with DTE this year. There was 1,000 of them. I think we still probably have about 100 of them once more. But once again, this is just a visual portion of just the support that I know that everyone in Royal Oak already provides, and you know, I just appreciate my veterans, the committee, and everyone here. So mostly, we just want to thank everyone, you know, in attendance here and not here. It really does go out of the way to support us. So thank you very much.
You know, Mr. Mayor, can I ask Mr. Wondoff why he's wearing green today?
It's for this Operation Green Light, and it fringed up my eyes.
And Mrs. Wondoff says he is the light of the world.
I thought your eyes were hazel. I'm sorry.
All right. No, sincere thanks to all the work that you're doing. It's not just putting on events. It's the outcomes of those events that have really and continue to make a material difference in, in the lives of Royal Oakers and especially our veterans. Thank you for all you do. Okay, this brings us to item six, which is public comment. Just a few notes before we commence. The city commission values and relies upon the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related topic, whether or not it's on the agenda. I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be one public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the public hearing on the necessity and standard resolution three and four of the special assessment for the paving of Mount Vernon Boulevard, you may wait until that time at which the public hearing is open and comment will be at that time, and all the same rules that we have here at this general public comment will apply there, and we can talk and hear specifically about that topic. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment or regarding the public hearing, please wait till recognized by me, the mayor. For the record, we ask that you state your name and address. Please be mindful, the city wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per person, not per topic. And we do have a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. Always feel free to reach out to us via email or other means. And please know that we typically don't respond to questions during public comment. However, we're writing them down, and when that topic comes up, we will ask those questions. If your question is not related to anything we plan to discuss tonight, please make sure that you leave your name and contact information with Ms. Judy Davids. She is our amazing community engagement specialist, and unless it's a rhetorical question, we'd love to get back to you and find an answer to whatever question or concern you have. And our interim city manager is also taking notes here and does follow up on things as appropriate and as necessary. So with that, who's first tonight? Yes, sir, in the front. No rush. No, we'll wait till you're ready. Is that something you want to, you want to get to our clerk?
I have, I do have stuff for the clerk, but I can, I can do it right after.
Okay, no problem.
I'm coming here as prepared as I'm going to be, okay? Okay, uh, whenever you want to start the time. Okay, good evening. My name is Anthony Polikowski. I live at 618 Mount Vernon Boulevard.
About 35 years ago, in 1990, I lived in 830 13 Mile Row, which is a part of Arlington's association. I got a piece of paper that I gotta read there. You took it away from me. I worked closely with Dick Cole and Commissioner Shirley Evil that is petitioning off Windermere Road at the time. I am fully aware of the reasons of the petition to block off Lexington, Mount Vernon, and Windermere, in my opinion, and return to the roadmap 40 years ago. It became apparent to me that the city now wishes to reopen all of Lexington, Mount Vernon, and Mount Vernon for many reasons. I am now an international professional engineer for North America. I have three packages to present to you, which I gave to the petition. One is the petition. My response, I'm gonna go really quick. Basically, I'm saying that I'm now realizing the intent of the commission is to eventually concret all of Mount Vernon and remove all the dead ends in Arlington area to divide, well, anyway. My estimate is that this is going to happen in about 10 years. I think this is a realistic, as the third block is to reopen the road, I believe, from Custard to Marius, since the senior citizen in the park is now owned and operated by the city. This will be easily a task in the future for all underground utilities now buried and being replaced and updated at taxpayers' expense. Okay, the real cost doesn't include all the tree removals and the underground utilities, which will be about five times your estimated costs. Okay? So anyways, I think they're trying to return to the map of 40 years ago. Okay, I was part of the thing to close it down. And now I think what's going to happen is it's going to reopen Windermere, Lexington, and Mount Vernon to original map. And anyways, my personal plan, basically, I'm gonna be selling out of here. I'm done with this, and I think the construction is going to be a couple of years, and I want to get out of here before the construction begins. This is my personal understanding of an engineer. There's a drawing that I gave you that shows a cross-section. All the utilities that's buried that nobody knows about. Okay? And this, this needs to be discussed with a better understanding. Thank you.
I apologize. I did not know that there was a later time. My name is Deborah Barnett. I am from 716 Mount Vernon Boulevard. I'm a middle school math teacher and just getting home from work, so I would have stayed had I known. This is my third time addressing you regarding the proposed paving of Mount Vernon. Despite previous appearance to voice my opposition, I continue to receive letters from the city engineering stating, and I quote, "There is no need to attend the meeting, and this is just being sent for your information only." It is both frustrating and misleading to receive such communications regarding this, especially when after each meeting, I find the decision to proceed with the paving has already been made, despite the objection raised by the residents like myself. The most recent letter informed us that the city has determined that paving to be necessary. Necessary for whom exactly? If the decision was based on a democratic process, then why does the vote of the residents seem to hold no weight whatsoever? Only 42, or 46.2% of the residents voted in favor of the, of the street being paved. Hardly a majority, and our system, a majority is above 50%. I'm not sure what math you looked at, and even the new math, as I keep hearing from my parents, would show that the majority must still represent the highest percentage of voters, which in this case, it is clearly not. Yet, yet the decision has been pushed forward regardless of the lack of support from the people who have been most affected by this change financially and emotionally. When you vote for a policy or proposal yourself, you would never move forward if the majority did not approve it. So why is it that this project is being pushed forward despite the lack of majority support from the resident who are affected the most by it? This is not just a matter of fairness. It's a matter of respecting the democratic process. As elected officials, I understand you are tasked with making decisions in the best interest of the community, but it is disheartening to see that the wishes of the residents are being disregarded. In a democracy, the vote of the people should matter, and it is difficult to understand why the majority opinion on this matter seemed to have been ignored. I would like to know why the concerns raised by the residents have been consistently sidelined and why this issue is still being moved forward without meaningful considerations of the facts or the community's desires. The situation is eroding trust in local government and raising serious questions about decision-making process. Why is driving this decision, or what is driving this decision, and are there, are there factors at play in which we have not been fully disclosed of to the public? As a result, as a member of this community, I'm asking for transparency, honesty, and fair opportunity for the residents to have their voices heard. You are hearing them, but you are not taking them into consideration.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Barnett. Who's next?
Good evening. My name is Trish Oliver. I'm a 40-year resident, almost 40 years of Royal Oak. On page 82 of tonight's agenda packet, a description of the proposed Mount Vernon paving states that paving roadways is in line with a strategic plan goal. The operative word here is plan, just like the master plan currently under review. Very few people know what the master, the strategic plan goals are, or the details of it, how it was developed, who voted on it, and how the public was informed about it. This is similar to the draft of the master plan that most of the public hasn't been informed about. We've been shut out. Just a few of the things in the master plan objectives that every resident should be concerned about include the following: allowing taller, high-density apartments without onsite parking or sufficient green space on Woodward and many major roads such as 13-mile next to single-family homes. In fact, under consideration tonight is cutting down many extremely valuable old growth trees on Mount Vernon in order to pave the road, which contradicts the strategic goal entitled environmental leadership. As everyone knows, a tree is the best way for absorbing water runoff, among other environmental benefits. It should be protected for future generations. Eliminating one-family, single-family residential land use category with its protections instead, substituting the term neighborhood residential is also of concern. Ignoring residents' recommendations to add thousands of affordable housing units by increasing density in the current low-density multifamily zones instead of in single-family neighborhoods. The mayor and city commission are about to place our homes into a giant Petri dish. They are experimenting with our property values, families, and our quality of life when making many extreme and radical changes to the city's master plan and zoning laws. When questioned at the September 16th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, city officials reluctantly admitted that there is not a comparable city in the United States that has successfully made so many changes at the same time. For more information or to support us, please visit protectroyaloke.com. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Yes, sir, in the front.
Yeah, my name is Don Zeeman. I live at 612 Mount Vernon, Royal Oak. I've been there about 27 years. I used to live on North Wilson for 10 years. I'm a retired insurance agent for AAA of Michigan for 32 years in casualty and home. I've always worked in the branch because I wanted to, instead of a small office. Always involved in safety of children and adults because I had to with claims people for 15 years when they were in the branch. I've had and heard of people being struck from the rear while riding and walking. The results are devastating. This is due to sound. The road is used a lot by children and bikes and many dog walkers. When walking from east to west, you When walking from east to west, you cannot hear cars approaching from the rear if it was paved compared to a gravel road, which is very dangerous for children and adults along with increase in speed from pavement. Remember, this is a safe, thorough way to school classes, soccer, hockey, and other activities in the park. Please do not put children and adults in danger of an unmonitored dead-end street. This road is in very good to excellent condition. The city started putting larger rocks and stones about ten years ago, which do not crumble, and this has been a major improvement. Excuse my voice. Children in the playground area and the sidewalk to the right of the dead end could be deadly with a speeding car. Approaching the dead end, there's only one way to avoid a barrier crash, and that is to the right of the dead end, which is a sidewalk. Police opinion is a necessity here. This is not fair to young mothers with young children with the increase in parking at the end of the street. I'm talking about walking and using picnic tables, looking at their phones, making mothers feel on guard and uncomfortable. The street does not need to be paved. Beauty of the block, taking down trees, increase of sun in the summer, burning up of grass, increase of heat in homes during the summer, beauty of the fall leaves being taken away. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zeeman. Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison, before you start, thank you for your service. I know you're a proud veteran.
Thank you for recognizing it. Bill Harrison, twenty-seven twenty-nine Trafford, Royal Oak. I don't know if you're aware of the flyer that's being circulated by the South Oakland Citizens for the Homeless. There's going to be a meeting on Friday, November fifteen, at eleven forty-five at the Senior Center to discuss their activities. They're going to be taking over the former Presbyterian Church on the corner of Thirteen Mile and Crooks. They will have a twenty-year land use from the Presbyterian. I guess my question is, are you folks engaged in this? Are you aware of this? Apparently not. Has Royal Oak taken any action to determine the number of homeless people in Royal Oak? I remember twenty, twenty-five years ago, the police department embedded a detective in the homeless in the downtown area, and they found that there were twenty-eight homeless people living in the downtown area, and they were organized by, believe it or not, a woman. When you, if you were homeless and came to downtown, you were directed to go to see this woman. She would tell you where to stay and whatever. But just, you know, there are several people that are concerned about, you know, the homeless people in large amounts in the church. I have a question whether it's going to be just homeless people or whether we're inviting these illegal immigrants that have crossed the southern border, whether they're going to be involved in this. I'll have several questions on Friday. I'm reading blank faces. It sounds like you folks are not aware. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Robert Danu, six nineteen Mount Vernon. I'll be speaking about Mount Vernon a little later. Wanted to just have a few comments about the Exxon contract. I happened to catch that in the agenda. Having to help negotiate an Exxon contract, there are a few things I noticed that hopefully were addressed or considered by whoever was in charge of reviewing that matter. Exxon provides a good service to law enforcement, body cameras, various technology services, online services, and various data, data saving and processing. Helps you look for trends and does different things. One thing Exxon certainly is, is expensive. The one thing I will point out is police work existed before Exxon came around. Police departments for a long time had ways of saving various data, like various videos, CCTV, et cetera. One thing I noticed in the contract was a, something for Exxon, I believe it was Interview Room was on the contract. You know, what I'd hate to see is stuff duplicated where the police department could be using what's probably already existing CCTV for the same purpose that, like, a service like Interview Room may provide. Interview Room makes it easy for the investigators and officers to save, but again, they could simply be transferring some video files into those types of, into the Exxon suite if they needed to. The other thing I noticed was the Cradle Point modems at roughly forty thousand dollars. What we found in my agency was we were able to supplant the Exxon in-car video using existing Cradle Point modems provided by Clemis, which is the report-writing system that I know Royal Oak uses and many area agencies use. So hopefully those considerations were reviewed and considered, and thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak at public comment tonight? Yes.
Okay. My name is Deborah Ivy, and I live at one three nine East Windermere, and I have lived in Royal Oak since I was five, and I'm seventy-one. I have always walked up and down Mount Vernon, Lexington, now mostly just Mount Vernon. It's a gorgeous place. I'm under a lot of stress right now and can't go anywhere, so I use that as my keeping me sane. I always feel better after I've walked over there looking at those gorgeous trees. It's been a beautiful fall. I can't even imagine that not being there for me anymore because somebody wants to pave the road. Also, everywhere you turn, we're involved in trying to save the environment, and you wanna tear it down for one amount of paved road that we don't need. It's a safe place. I walk every single day during the day, and usually two, three times a week. I go over there at night and run because that road doesn't go anywhere. It's just the people that live there, and it's just a beautiful, safe place, and I beg you not to trash it with tearing down all the trees and putting in pavement. We've got more than enough pavement in Royal Oak now. Sorry. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak? Ms. Poprowski?
Yeah.
Oh, I had Ms. Poprowski first. I'll get to you next.
Nancy Poprowski, Earth nine eleven. Can anyone tell me a place in Michigan where fracking has taken place? Too close, in Livonia, and the Schoolcraft College campus. Even though majority rules in some places, that doesn't mean fracking is safe for its residents' air quality and water supply. In two thousand and sixteen, the City of Southfields Commission, along with its mayor Ken Seivers, state rep Jeremy Moss, residents and activists like me, I grew up in Southfield, protested Sunday mornings to stop fracking at a church site. It was heartbreaking to find out that this congregation would vote to jeopardize their churchgoers and nearby neighbors for possible profit. Residents and churchgoers could be endangered by poor air quality and leaks into their wells. Many priceless old trees were killed erecting the drilling site. Luckily, striking oil was unsuccessful. Does Royal Oak have protection from fracking? I say no fracking in my backyard. Too dangerous. Because of our environment already being in danger and being more at risk soon, we must rethink the master plan to keep Royal Oak as green as we can. The continuation of dense, overly cemented landscape has got to slow down. Developers have not proven their projects are really affordable for those who are really in need, and with mass deportation being the number one subject, many businesses might start failing due to lack of minimum-wage workers. Should the city quit rushing into anything environmentally unfriendly? And also, a possible economic issue as well, definitely, especially when talking about mini main streets with small businesses. The new future has many uncertainties, so I think we need to act fast for the endangered environment. It's our first home, and slow down not to overbuild when cities' futures are becoming uncertain. Let's all take a deep breath and work together as humankind and not against each other for the love of money. Please remember, during the holiday season and always, the biggest gift is protecting the earth, our only affordable, single-planet home we can live on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Judy Mullen. I live at five two seven West Sunnybrook, just three blocks north of Mount Vernon. I've lived here since nineteen fifty-six. I've lived in Royal Oak since nineteen forty-nine. I'm seventy-eight years old. I grew up with a family of six girls that ended up moving over to Mount Vernon, eight-ten Mount Vernon, and a year later, our family moved to Sunnybrook. This is my stomping grounds. We played there all the time. I grew up with these girls. The atmosphere there is just so peaceful, a lot of memories. I only found out about this recently and just had to come tonight to say that I object cutting down those beautiful trees that have to be well over a hundred years old. I just had a tree cut down in my yard that had to be seventy feet tall and massively big, and it's just changed the whole atmosphere of my yard and my neighbor's yard, although my neighbor's with the pool. They like having the sunshine. But it's just a unique area. I, my son lived on, owned a house on Lexington. He's in Tucson now. He'd like me to move there, but I, it just breaks my heart to see all those beautiful trees that are marked and what it would do to the neighborhood, and like I say, the atmosphere and the wildlife that lives in the trees. And it's just, it's just a shame. I just want to let you know I object to it, so please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen. All right. Does anyone wish to speak tonight that hasn't already spoke? So you can, if you're talking about Mount Vernon, you can speak at the public hearing, but if you want to speak, you know, about any other topic. I know some people talked about Mount Vernon here. They may have to go later or whatever. It's, we're pretty flexible. Okay. Anybody else? Going once? Going twice? All righty. We're gonna bring the meeting back to this side of the table and close up public comment, which brings us to item six point five, which is a update on various activities that have taken place and that are planned for Royal Oak. I see Mr. Witz is here to talk about some of the things he's involved in.
Thank you, Mayor, and hello, Commissioners. Just wanted to give a quick update on funding that was allocated to some programs and their success. I want to mention the Arts Beats and Eats Restaurant Support Program. There was a five-hundred percent return on funding that was allocated for restaurants. They did more than two hundred thousand dollars of gross revenue. Wanted to share that, and a big lift for them. There were also eight thousand kids who enjoyed inflatables over the four days, saving parents more than thirty-two thousand dollars. So that is a benefit of five times what was invested into the program, so that's a quick update on that aspect. The Royal Oak Dinner Stroll sold out within two weeks and did two hundred and fifty diners. There are now sixteen restaurants that want to participate already next year. We're gonna go to the DDA for funding for that in the future. The pilot program was a big success and definitely showed a need and I think has had an impact of fifteen thousand dollars for local restaurants. The Royal Oak Schools Program had more than three hundred kids participate with parents and siblings, over a thousand visits to restaurants, and considered that very successful. And the last of the programming was for Pink Out Royal Oak, which raised twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for breast cancer research and attracted five thousand people. That's a projection to local bars and restaurants. I don't know if everyone saw the pink ribbons that were on many of the establishment's windows and the pink lights, the pink shirts, all throughout the month of October, and I would just say we had great success for this schools program. We were able to accommodate all interested students and are applying leftover funding to the Royal Oak Holidays Program, which I just want to give an update about because it is coming up quickly. On November twenty-first, I think it's important that the citizens know and we hear that the lighting, the tree lighting ceremony is gonna become the lighting of centennial comments. There is expanded lights on the giant oak tree, and there is a huge ceremony, which includes two Team USA pairs figure skaters. Thornetta Davis will be there. One of the commissioners suggested a food drive, which will benefit the Metro Detroit Youth Club Holiday Basket Program, and I want to say that. So in case you have questions, there are also many carnival rides and inflatables, and in order for families to enjoy those for free, they are asked to bring four cans of food to support the food drive. So that's a message. I'll be working with Judy to get the word out. Troy State will be closed. There's an art fair at the Farmer's Market. We have the inaugural Beacon of Light Awards, which will be awarded, one from the mayor, one from Oakland County Executive Dave Coulter, who will be co-hosting on the twenty-first. The Royal Oak Drum Line will be there. The Royal Oak Children's Choir will be there. James Whalen will be performing, and Sean Blackman, in addition to Thornetta Davis. And it is the kickoff of the rink at Royal Oak. Skating will be half-price for Royal Oak residents on the kickoff night, and we open at four o'clock till nine P.M., and that is the start of the rink. And speaking of the rink, I will mention that ice is being made now and should be ready to go in a few days, and just excited about the progress and the good weather that we've been having there. We had called it the Royal Oak Holiday Village, and with, you know, the slightly reduced programming, we're now calling it Royal Oak Holidays. That is the name of the extent of what's happening. And also on the twenty-first, you'll see the three market structures that were designed and just a kickoff on their presence as potential to add more in the future and create a whole holiday village. The beautiful thing about this is that nine local businesses have signed up to be in those structures, in two of them, so we'll have nine retailers, and we will operate it. So those retailers don't have to provide labor. Everything will be on consignment, and we'll also sell City of Royal Oak merchandise there. So that's two of the hots. The third one, we'll have Give Thanks Bakery in for two weeks and the Office Coffee Shop for two weeks, and then we'll possibly look for one for the fifth and last week. So we're excited to show those structures, how they, how they fit. They'll be on the north, I would call it northeast corner of the rink, and just excited about seeing those in action for five weekends, and those will be up and, up and going, including the sale of gluvine, which I know was important to some on the body, so excited about that. Couple of things I also want to share about Royal Oak Holidays. Santa will be there on all weekend days. There will be horse and wagon rides that will be operating free of charge to folks on all Friday and Saturday nights, so we'll have that festivity going. December seventh is the return of the Cookie Crawl, which is already sold, a thousand tins, features eighteen Royal Oak bakeries, including Give Thanks Again, Astoria, Kerspelli's, Holiday Market, and others. So excited about that. Also, on December seventh, we'll be having Royal Oak Schools Children's Performances and Choir and Band, and also on December sixth through eighth, we'll have the Bottomless Toy Chest Toy Drive, which secured fifteen hundred toys. secured 1,500 toys for that wonderful organization that supports presents and gifts for kids with cancer throughout Michigan, not just in, in Metro Detroit. So we have, we're hoping to hit 2,000 toys this year. On the next weekend, the Grinch is coming, so the Grinch on the 14th, 15th will be throughout downtown Royal Oak, might be appearing in a retail store, a coffee house, skating at the rink, but the Grinch will be around in the library, reading stories, and just excited, you know, again, for that addition. And on the last weekend, we will bring out the singing voices and have holiday karaoke on the steps of the library that, for folks that are skating, will get to hear wonderful, wonderful singers, we hope. My favorite, my favorite part of Royal Oak Holidays, though, is the Great Wolf Elf, Great, Great Royal Oak Elf Hunt. There are 40 elves that have been designed that'll be placed in stores with a scavenger hunt app, and so you download the app, and the more stores you visit, you can win a $1,000 shopping spree, a Weekend of the Soaring Eagle. There's more than $10,000 in prizes, and the whole spirit is to support visiting businesses. There's a level of prizes if you visit 20 businesses in 30 days, another level if you visit 30, another if you visit 40. A Royal Oak resident has designed the elves and curated them, and I want to mention just three of them because they're fun. I'll mention Nitro, who will be there at I-Freeze Ice Cream, because they make their ice cream with nitrogen, so that's fun. We have Double Shot, who will be at Seven Sunday's Coffee Shop, and we will have Ribbons at Right Impression. But you can imagine 40 elves, different characters, lots of fun. Some places, you go in and scan a barcode, some places, you have to get a picture taken with an elf, so we hope to make it fun for families and young adults and, and just folks that want to support the city. At the end of the day, we were allocated $112,500 between the city and the DDA, and the city is getting a program that is going to cost $173,000, and I'm happy to say, we are doing that with no additional ask of the city. Tonight, the values come from sponsors, some reallocation, the revenue taken in from the Cookie Crawl tins, and House of Dank contribution from Arts Beats and Eats has gotten us within $13,000 of budget, and we are picking up the difference. And again, we are excited and grateful for the support, and I want to make sure everybody puts November 21st on their calendar, because that's going to be a new tradition, as we light up all the park together, and you'll see the giant oak tree with enhanced lighting along with all the other activities. So Judy, counting on you for good promotion. We also have social media, we know Fox, too, is coming out to the city both Thursday morning and Thursday afternoon, and we'll be pitching others as Royal Oak will be standing for holidays, and we hope we can support both business and good, and good enjoyment for families. So thank you for the opportunity to update everybody and appreciate the support.
Thank you, Mr. Witz. Mr. Collo?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, I just want to thank Mr. Witz, like, this is an amazing opportunity for the city. I know how much my, I have my kids this weekend at the library for a scavenger hunt that they do every week. I can't imagine what fun adults are gonna have looking around town for those 40 elves. So this is a fun way to get us involved and active in the holiday season, make us relevant, make us a destination like Rochester, Detroit, all of our fellow neighbor cities, we could be one of the Christmas destinations, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say, I think that was the hope, and I know it's been an entire army of Royal Oak volunteers, business owners, DDA members, people from this board trying to pull this together over the last year, people contributing to the design and development of the Kindle Huts and all of that, and so folks are really excited, and like you said, Commissioner Collo, you know, what a time, five weekends in the city of Royal Oak where you can come down and, you know, ride a carriage, or not ride a carriage, but ride a...
Orson.
Orson wagon, wagon's the word I'm looking for, which we did last year, which was really fun. Come out and ice skate, enjoy glue wine, hot cocoa, see the different vendors that are around from our Royal Oak businesses, and then also stroll through the downtown and see all the amazing places to eat and all the amazing businesses that we have that you can shop at for the holiday season. So I think it's something more than just, you know, a gimmick, it's really a place, regardless of how old you are, how young you are, come out, have some fun, and really enjoy it. So I'm really excited. I can't wait to take my family there.
All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Does anyone wish to make a motion? Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval.
A motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to item eight, which is a hearing of necessity in standard resolutions three and four, special assessment paving of Mount Vernon Boulevard. Ms. Donahue.
This meeting is called a consent for paving of Mount Vernon, so this is custer to the dead end. The city clerk did send notices to the property owners on the block, as well as publish this in the paper. So if approved, this project would be paving two 20-foot wide lanes with seven-inch concrete. The median would remain as is, so about 12 feet wide median in the middle, and then the frontage in front of each person's house is about 10 feet of grass space, so just to give you an idea of the visual there. The project would also include a hammerhead turnaround at the dead end of the block, so that if fire trucks get down there, they're able to do a three-point turn and turn around. And it would also include paving of the intersection of custer at Mount Vernon, and that would be done at the city's cost, not at the district's. So I did want to go over a few key points, just to make sure everyone is on the same page with this project, potential project. This was a petition, it was requested and led by a resident of Mount Vernon, this was not initiated by staff. The petitioner had specifically asked for three separate petitions for each block of Mount Vernon, and we have records going back 25 years, we've tried this 13 times, paving all of Mount Vernon, and it's never passed. And so I believe that's why the petitioner wanted to try and do this block at a time, instead of trying to do all of Mount Vernon. So I know that question's come up quite a bit. The petition signatures that signed in favor of this represented 46.2% of the assessable front footage. In the past, we've always kind of used that rule of thumb of 50% or more of the district being in favor of paving in order to move forward, but that really is just a rule of thumb, it is not a policy or a requirement. The commission can select to do what it chooses here. If this project is moved forward, it likely would not be constructed until 2026. At this point, it's a little too late to get a survey, get it designed, and get it out to bid, and get competitive pricing for 2025. Additionally, we need about $600,000 of water sewer funding to replace the water main if we do this project, and that simply just isn't programmed for next year. It is something we could program for 2026, though. We did have some comments about allowing parking at the end of the block for the park access there. Just wanted to clarify that that is not part of the proposed plan, it's simply the end of the road, it's a turnaround. There's a driveway right at the end of the road, too, so it's, it would be bad practice to have parking spaces there blocking somebody's driveway. There are nine trees that would need to be removed in order to construct the roadway as proposed. Four of those trees are at the dead end of the road, they're a little bit smaller and kind of clumped together right where that turnaround would need to go. However, the remaining five trees are very mature, quite large, ranging from four and a half foot diameter to five foot in diameter. Four of those large trees are on the south side of Mount Vernon, one of them is on the north side of Mount Vernon, and we don't have plans to move any trees within the median if this project were to go forward. There is no plan to reopen Mount Vernon to Maray or Lexington or any other street, so I'm not really sure where that came from, but that is absolutely not something that I have in a plan, the master plan, anything like that, so I did want to clarify that point. And also wanted to point out that this, this is, of course, a dead-end road here, so paving this section would pretty much exclusively benefit the neighborhood or the residents that live on that block. It wouldn't necessarily help traffic flow through a neighborhood or connect neighborhoods, so it really kind of just serves that block as opposed to the city as a whole. After the public hearing is closed, there are two resolutions for your consideration. The first is standard resolution three, that would declare this project as a necessity. The second is standard resolution four, and that would set the date for the next public hearing, which is the public hearing of assessment, to be on December 9th. However, if the commission does not wish to move forward with this and just wants to stop the process at this point, you can simply take no action tonight, and that will stop the process right now. I think that's all I have, unless you have any other questions on this.
Questions? Ms. Donahue. Yes, Commissioner Douglas.
I'm sorry, did you say that this, that Mount Vernon in various, various portions has been before you 13 times?
At least, that's as far back as our electronic records go, but I'm pretty sure it's been going on before that as well.
And you mentioned the water main replacement, is, what's the condition of that water main? Do you know how old it is?
It's from the 1920s, so there is no reason we should ever keep that if we're gonna pave that road. We don't want to dig it up for a water main break a year later, so place it while we're there.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Collo?
Ms. Donahue, I just want to make sure, the entire district was notified of tonight's meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Commissioner Herzog, question?
How, um, do you know by chance how many miles of dirt road we have in the city?
It is about three, I don't have it to the decimal point in front of me, but right around three miles. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think you answered my questions about, it was all news to me that we were somehow opening up. I was like, I feel like I'm involved in a lot of things, but that was, that was new to me. Okay, so thank you for clarifying that, there's always a chance we missed something, but that's good to know. Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I don't have a question per se, but, you know, I appreciate the neighbors that came out tonight. I think that we've made it to this point because we wanted to hear what the neighbors had to say, we have a public hearing coming up next. But at this moment, I, I think that we've not had anyone come out that said, said that they want it. We had 56% of the people sign petitions saying that they did want it, although one person did indicate that they were moving, so that's, you know, that's one house that could literally flip the entire district at this point, that goes from 56 to, you know, 58 the other way, so that, that's one thing to think about. But short of having a strong contingent behind it tonight, I appreciate Ms. Donahue and your staff and all the work that you did put into this, I think that, for, at least for me, this might end tonight.
Well, you guys have all heard what I had to say, and I'll reiterate it after the hearing. Okay, if nobody else has any questions from Ms. Donahue, then I will open up the public hearing, so, yes, ma'am. Same rules apply as before, except you gotta talk about Mount Vernon.
I got a letter from our neighbor who couldn't be here, is it enabled to read that or give it to you?
Yeah, if you give it to the city clerk, we can get a copy of it.
Okay, because I would like, at least maybe I can reference part of it, I'll, I'll see what I can get done in my comments, so. All right, my name is Melissa Donahue, I live at 619 Mount Vernon Boulevard, and I object to paving my block of Mount Vernon. Part of it is I feel that really this petition shouldn't have even gone this far. I'm part of the majority, nearly 54%, that doesn't want this road paved. Why? One is the cost. The project's cost has ballooned to more than $1.3 million, with $1 million in city funds earmarked, and it appears from the agenda pack, packet, that other planned and approved city road projects may have to be delayed if we were to go forward with this. And again, this is for just one dead-end block of Mount Vernon, not the entire street. Two is the trees. The city has identified the nine trees, including some we estimate to be 200 years old or so, that would be cut down on my block of Mount Vernon. Most are on the south side where we live, three that we look at from our front living room every day. These are the ones that my daughter also talked about, Claire, who was eight, and that she doesn't want to see them go. She spoke two weeks ago when I was here. But with all the disruption and that construction would cause, you know, we think that there likely would be more trees that could die, and ultimately would dramatically change the look of our road, and not in a good way. So I'm asking you to please vote no on this. It's not fair for the majority of taxpayers on my street to pay for something and over 15 years with 6% interest that the majority does not want. I do understand some of my neighbors want a paved road, so I'd ask the city, what are the alternatives? Has the city considered double chip seal as an option? Other counties in Michigan, the Midwest, and Canada with similar weather conditions use this to pave gravel roads, and at a fraction of the cost of a concrete road. Could asphalt be considered? Could a narrow, narrower road save trees? The Oakland County Road Commission's website and guidance on a paving of gravel roads says, quote, "Planners say that gravel roads should be paved when traffic exceeds 500 cars a day," end quote. On my block, we're talking 20 households, if you take the two off that don't drive on the road at the end with custer. So if you added deliveries, people, visitors, I can't imagine we'd reach half of that total in a day. So ultimately, I'd ask that you not move this forward. I have a letter from the next-door neighbors, they live, the Corwin family, 703 Mount Vernon Boulevard. This was written by Lynn Corwin Byers, she's the daughter of John and Vera Ann Corwin. I'm gonna skip, they, they're not in favor of this either, I'm gonna skip to what she says, I think is pretty impactful. She mentions growing up and remembers when Lexington was paved, and she says, "Down came all the beautiful trees that lined both sides of the street and the boulevard. The dark, the dirt, excuse me, the dark dirt road was replaced with sterile white concrete. It went from a beautiful serene neighborhood to an ugly barren stark street. It was so sad to see. It has taken 50 years to get it back looking treat again, but still lacks the character it once had with the dirt road and towering oaks and maples." She goes on, but I'll give you the letter.
Yeah, if you want to present it to Clerk Halish, she'll, she'll make sure we get a copy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
I also live at Mount Vernon.
Yeah.
Hi, I live at 816 Mount Vernon. Is protocol, is this an opportunity to ask questions or is it only commentary?
You can ask questions, and then we won't answer them directly, but when we close the hearing, we'll ask the questions to who can get us the answers.
Okay. So I, I would consider myself to be, I've lived on the street for 10 years, and I've heard the long history of the arguments that my, you know, the neighbors, we all have an opinion about whether it should be paved or not paved. I think potentially the reason there may not be a lot of people here that were for paving is even what I placed on my refrigerator when I received this notice in the mail, is it says, "Tonight's hearing is for the purpose of hearing objections." And I don't know that it was clear that it could be also for people that are in favor of it. So I think that's something that should be considered. I think the other aspect, though, is questions should be raised, like, in the process of construction, is there a potential for the medium to be removed? Because if, if that isn't clear, that's, that's a, for me, that would be a no, I would object to paving Mount Vernon if the medium had to be removed because it was deemed that was necessary for the construction to be completed. That can't happen, that'll absolutely ruin the street. Other questions about the trees that might be as old as 200 years old, would they be removed in the near future anyway because of the health of the trees? I love the trees, I'd hate to see them go as well, but I, if that's also going to happen, then I'm not so sure that's a strong objection to having this road paved. Over the, over the time of living on the street, I know the city, it's easier to maintain a street that's paved, I know that there's wear and tear, as a, as a father of teens now in college and having multiple cars, the cost of the wear and tear on the car, even going slowly, has added up over time, the dust, et cetera, it, it's always in the air, and so, again, I'm fairly agnostic about it, but I just want to make sure that whatever can be placed in conditionally to minimize the damage to the environment has to happen, and losing the medium to me is, is a no, is a no vote, if that's part of the, the final agreement of how it's get paved, so, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Robert Danny, 619 Mount Vernon. A public hearing of necessity will take place today regarding the paving of Mount Vernon Boulevard. As I express in the commission, at the onset of this petition, I find that this petition should not be furthered, if for no other reason, the typical threshold of 50% in favor by affected property owners has not been achieved. However, there are other reasons why the standard resolutions three and four must not proceed. As well, the special assessment paving of Mount Vernon Boulevard must also be amended. These reasons are as follows. Number one, the commission has not meant the burden of necessity. A dead-end street servicing 22 homes does not justify the great cost the entire city will bear, as well as the homeowners directly. Two, the city has suddenly determined that a water may be replaced, nearly $900,000 initially, now another half million. What other surprise costs and add-on projects may we expect? At this point, I am anticipating more. For instance, there's been no mention of streetlight replacement, though most likely become necessary as existing fixtures are disturbed. Three, I feel there will be many more trees impacted, whether directly or, rather directly during the demolition phase or collateral damage of upset roof systems in the future. Four, while the petition has not even met the 50% threshold, for the small neighborhood impacted, this threshold should require much, much more support. This road is not a thoroughfare, and such expanse is wasteful without much greater support. Five, the city of Royal Oak has pride... Five, the city of Royal Oak has prided itself on its status of a tree city USA since 1976. The city's emblem until a few years ago was an oak tree. Many of the trees that will be impacted, largely oak trees, were over 150 years old in 1976. Now they are nearing or over 200 years old. In April 12, 2019 Oakland Press story, Mayor Fournier boasts of the ordinances that promote a great tree canopy and annual tree planting initiatives. Where is the disconnect here? Six, as I previously expressed, the residents and visitors in this neighborhood love and cherish the awesomeness when traveling down this road. It simply has a nostalgic, relaxed atmosphere. A couple days ago, I met a woman who lives a few streets away. She was here tonight. She explained that she goes here for walks every day. She said it keeps her sanity when she is able to get away and go up north. To me, that was powerful. As I've expressed, I lived on 13 Mile for 17 years. The vibe of this road and its scenery is what drew me here. Again, if I didn't like the dirt road, I would have not bought here on Mount Vernon Boulevard. And I'll also bring attention to the listed trees. 18-inch diameter tree, these are the trees slated to remove at this point. Again, I feel there will be more. Four-and-a-half diameter, five-foot diameter, 4.8 diameter, 4.7 diameter, four-and-a-half diameter. Those fours and ups, you're at 200-year-old trees, and I just don't think that's proper. Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to speak at this hearing? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Amy Orahood, and I live on East Windemere. When I moved in, the canopy down my street was huge of the foliage of the trees going over. Since I've lived there, there have been a lot of houses that have been bought, taken down, and then bigger houses put in. A lot of those, all of them, on the small one that I live on, those trees are gone now because the construction damaged the root systems. The foliage reaches out, and so did those root systems underneath. The trees that are near the edge where I walk on Mount Vernon every day, they will be damaged. I've seen it on my block, and it will happen. They will die if you pave that road. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Poprowski.
Nancy Poprowski. I'm not sure if the gentleman that said he was going to move was because he was moving already, or if because his street got ruined, so I think I'm going to watch that again to make sure. And then also, please don't ever think because a tree is old that we need to pave because it might die soon. My son might do that to me because I'm not feeling well. I mean, I don't think that's a good way to rationalize that. But anyway, like I said earlier, there are many negative environmental actions that will happen quickly that could be out of our hands. We are the environmental hands of Royal Oak. It's up to us to keep it safe and green. Paving a street makes it less safe. Cutting down mature priceless trees makes it less green and environmentally necessary for the life of our planet. And the costly burden to anyone on that street is wrong, especially if you're retired or if the majority is against it. I've noticed how parts of downtown allow to cut themselves off from through traffic for business and visitors to have safe and communal spaces. I believe the residents of Mount Vernon deserve this same consideration. Since they are not visiting, they live and bought there for its great trees, safe road, and quiet berm closing. Please remember, pave paradise, put up a parking lot, and you don't know what you got till it's gone. The residents who live there every day, not us, will feel the pain of losing what they know matters. We need to listen to them. Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to speak tonight on Mount Vernon? Yes.
Just a couple things I wanted to say when I was up here before. I'm a bike rider. I say I'm older. I ride my bike all the time. I'm on Mount Vernon a great deal of time just because of the peacefulness of the whole thing. I only recently found out about this and saw tapes around some of the trees with a sign on it, so I stopped to read it. And I was absolutely in shock that they were going to pave that block. Why that block? I mean, if you're going to pave it, why not pave the whole street? No? As a taxpayer, I object. I think the money could be spent on other things that are more important, like maybe the animal shelter, you know, just my opinion. But I'd say I was in total shock. It just changed the whole atmosphere of the street. And you can't replace the trees, you know? Cut them down, they're gone. The whole atmosphere is totally changed, so thank you.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to this side of the table. Maybe I'll just kick it off. A lot of it's going to be repeat what I've said at previous meetings when we discussed this. I'm really perplexed how this got this far, why we're talking about it for three and four. I think that, you know, out of the gate, the votes weren't there on the street to, you know, it's not an overwhelming majority of people that are looking to get this third of Mount Vernon paved. The question of doing a third at a time versus the entire street is also questionable to me, the logic behind that. So, you know, just right out of the gate, I had concerns of even pushing this to where we're at today. Should have killed it out of the gate. It's a dead-end street, so it's going to cost the folks that are affected by this a tremendous amount of money. And yeah, sometimes we have to do assessments for sidewalks and things like that because the entire community benefits from it or the entire neighborhood. I'm struggling to understand the benefit here to the community at large when this is a street primarily and almost exclusively for the use of the residents of Mount Vernon. Staff isn't pushing it. It's not in any sort of plans to say, hey, let's do this, let's get it paved, let's move forward. And, you know, I haven't seen that. Claire made an excellent point or set of points related to the trees. I don't, again, I mean, maybe this is more of the cost of it. Sometimes trees, if they're diseased or if something, you know, we have to put a road in or do something for, you know, the greater good, that is, sometimes a trade-off we don't like to have to make. I can't see a trade-off here of those mature trees going away in the context of everything that I just thought or just expressed. And so, I really, from the get-go, struggled to understand why we would have it here at resolution three and four, but I lost those votes, and that's okay because I trust my colleagues to have different opinions. And I trust folks on Mount Vernon that may want the street to be paved. But to me, and I said it from the beginning, for me to even be open to this sort of idea, we'd have to see a clear majority of folks wanting to change the aesthetics and flow and everything of Mount Vernon in order to consider it and move it forward. And I didn't see that out of the gate. I don't see it now, and I don't think we should be moving forward with this. And I, you know, feel it's a big, I appreciate everybody coming out here tonight to express their opinions because it matters. But, you know, I'm sorry you had to come out and do that on a number of occasions. But before I open it up, because I do know we had a couple questions that came from public comment. One was, I heard medium, but I think I meant median. I think I got a half-cold right now, so I'm not picking up everything. Everyone's laying down all the time. But I think the median to be removed, or maybe it's medium. And then the other question was about the trees, would they have to be, you know, are they in any, do we have any information that suggests that they may be coming down anyways because they're diseased silver maples that we see in other parts of the community or whatnot?
So there is no plan to remove that median whatsoever, and I can't see a scenario where we would need to cut into that median. You do need to cut back, you know, a foot or so in order to place the forms to pave the road. But our inspectors went out and they checked every single tree out there. Could we put a form in here without damaging the root system? And so none of the trees in the median would be impacted if we were to construct this road. So that is off the table. We would not be eliminating that. In terms of the trees, we did ask our arborist to take a look at the ones we thought would have to come down and would they have to come down anyways, because sometimes that does make a difference in the decision. In this case, they were all deemed healthy. I can't tell you what the future holds for those trees, but at this time, there weren't any hollow trees or any issues like that.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I got that off my chest. And, you know, no disrespect to anyone that disagrees with me, but I felt it important that I express my thoughts and feelings once again. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and I definitely appreciate your take on this tonight. And you've held say of that the entire time you've done this. So, you know, a handful of things. I want Claire to know that she is part of this process, and whatever happens tonight, her voice is important. And her coming out is extremely important to our democracy. So make sure Claire knows that the city commission is very thankful for her coming out. And I hope she's doing all of her homework and site words and all that good stuff. So I've been a proponent of moving forward to the process until tonight. I think that resolution one and two, which is establishing the district, seeing what it would cost. And resolution three is like where we decide, do we want to move forward or not? And I was really holding down and hoping that tonight we'd hear from the community, do they want this or not? We hear a lot of, we don't want this, we don't want this, but tonight was the night for the public hearing to hear if you did want it, you would come out. And no one came out. There was no one that, you know, no one came out to say, we want this, this would be good, to really sell it as to why we would do this for the community. So that, to me at least, this would end tonight, that there's no reason to continue to move forward. I think it would be a good idea eventually to pave Mount Vernon. It's probably for the betterment of the community overall. I do think it should go from Maine to the dead end. That probably would be good. But I don't think we need to force it on anyone also. If the will is not there for the residents, because it is a high tax bill to pay over the 15 years, for some people, about $1,000 a year over 15 years. So I think it's, you know, we would need a majority to cover that. I just want to clear up a couple things also here about the tree canopy. The city does plant about 1,000 trees a year, so we are continuing to expand that tree canopy. That is something that's important to us, as is important to you. So I just want to make sure people know that we are planting about 1,000 trees a year in the public rights way throughout the entire city. So we share these values. There's a values that we all have together. So I'll make sure people hear that. But as far as I'm hearing tonight, I'm, you know, I was in favor of moving until this hearing tonight. I'm not in favor of moving forward.
Mr. Hunt?
Yeah, I agree with your comments, Mr. Mayor. And I would reiterate my statements from the last two hearings that we had here in opposition to this project. You know, I walked through that area this weekend, and I saw the trees that would be taken down, they had the signs attached to them. And taking down those trees would, in fact, change the landscape of that area, the aesthetics of that area. And right now, it's a quiet, it's a peaceful street. Even when a car is going down it, it still feels like very country-like. And I can understand how the residents of that area would not want that to change. I would feel a bit better about this if it were the entire length from Maine to the dead end. I don't know what sense it makes in doing one area when maybe down the road we're going to do another area and then another. It just doesn't seem to make much sense. But I will say, what's, you know, really tipping it for me is that there are, you know, the majority of the residents do not want this, and they're the ones that's going to be burdened with this high tax bill. Yeah, it's spread out over 15 years, but that's an annual amount that they're going to have to pay that they probably did not account for. So based on that, I am a no on this one. But I would say I'm a bit concerned that there may have been some confusion with the notice that went out. We hear that, you know, some people may have thought if they weren't in opposition to it, they don't have to come out and voice their concerns. There was someone that said that they did not, that they were told they did not have to come out for this to speak tonight. And that's just a concern of mine. So I don't know if there was different notices that went out or something that was contradictory, but that's just floating in the back of my head.
Commissioner Cheesam.
Well, I'll keep this brief because most of my points have been made before by others here at the table. I was a no last time. I remain a no tonight. You know, it's only part of the road. It's less than 50% of the frontage and support, the cost to the residents, the cost to the city, the trees. That this is not a throughway, so there's not really a strong benefit to the community. So I reiterate those points. I also want to piggyback on what Commissioner Hunt was saying. I do think it would be, if I was in support of something and I really wanted it to happen, I would probably come to the meeting even if the notice said it's only for opposition. But I do believe it's worth the city taking a critical look at the notice that goes out to make sure there's no confusion for future things. It doesn't really change my vote because I was a no last time anyway. But I do think we want, if at the table we have the perspective that we want to hear from the people in favor and oppose, I think that we need to make that notice in the clear in the notice, and that our expectations may have evolved over time, so I can recognize that as well. So thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
I, this has been before me as a city commissioner in my 11 years. Three, this may be the fourth time that the city has gone through this exercise with petitions to pave Mount Vernon. Staff has gone through the cost estimates, developed, you know, preliminary designs, spent staff time making the case here. And we, as a commission, have a duty to help the city run as efficiently as it can. It's the job of the city manager to make that happen, but nonetheless, we are in a position to help them operate more efficiently. And then I was shocked to hear that this has been up for consideration 13 times. 13 times staff has gone through this exercise, and the commission has turned it down. If I thought I could get away with it, I'd propose an ordinance that says we will never, ever pave Mount Vernon, and then we wouldn't have to go through this again. Yeah, I can't do that, but thanks. So I was also interested to hear, something I hadn't considered, was the issue of the water main. Replacing a 200-year-old water main would have, would most assuredly benefit all of, oh, it's on.
Yeah, there's some folks here.
Okay. Would most assuredly benefit all of the residents on this street and support their property values, as would paving the street in the long run. And I am concerned that the notice that, to Commissioner Cheesam's point, if we're sending out a notice that says you don't have to come unless you object, it kind of, you know, tips the balance and the scales in terms of people's willingness or interest or feeling that they have to show up to support something that they may have voted for because we do know that while 46% of the frontage signed a petition in favor of this, half of the total number of homes on this street did support the paving. Nevertheless, you know, it's a public hearing. We're here to listen to people. We did not hear supporters of this proposal come forward. And so I'm going to join in my commissioners in not suggesting that we move forward with resolution three. But I do agree with Commissioner Collo's point and Commissioner Macy, who made the point in our last meeting, that we needed to hold the public hearing in order to hear from the people. And to have squelched this process before we did that would have been an injustice to the public process and the transparency that we value.
Commissioner Herzog.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. I want to agree to that. We moved this forward so that we could hear everyone's point of view on this. And so we should relook at how we sent out the notices if we aren't asking everyone to come speak to that. When I look at this, I want to walk you kind of through my thought process a little bit so that you know that everyone up here takes it very serious, our jobs, and that we're very thoughtful in how we make decisions. So I'm really interested in safe and resilient infrastructure. We live in an urban setting. I know that there is talk about there's rural parts of Royal Oak. There are not rural parts of Royal Oak. We are in an urban city, and we should have infrastructure that is safe and resilient. We are in an urban city, and we should have infrastructure that is safe and resilient. We're facing a climate, we need climate resiliency. I sent my kids to school in shorts last week. So we know that we will have more rain, and I want the streets that we have in Royal Oak to be resilient. And when I hear about a 1920 water main, I have some concerns about, are we being resilient? And that's for our environment as well as our public health. I also look at the maintenance of the street. So we have three miles of dirt road in Royal Oak that has special equipment that we use to maintain that. And we also apply amendments to keep the dust down, is my understanding. So is there any environmental impacts of putting those amendments on? And also the upkeep of the equipment, the storage of that equipment, the capacity of the staff to do the things that they need to do. So I've been really, like, kind of juggling how three miles should have so much energy put into this system. But I agree, like, no one came out in, or very little support of this. It's not going to mess with connectivity. So along with my other commissioners, I will also be a no vote on this.
All right. Well, we're at a crossroads. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you for that joke there. That was good. Yep. So hearing the tenor of the table, knowing that Resolution 3 would need a motion to move on, and an absent motion would just die at the table. I do want to make a motion, not in approval of Resolution 3, but I want to hear more about our process. So I would like to make a motion within the next 90 days. Staff prepares a memo to us about how we notify people about these hearings, so to potentially give engineering a chance to review it and maybe change it. And then for DPS to give us the cost and environmental impact of maintaining our three-plus miles of unimproved roads in the city.
Motion by Commissioner Collo. Seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. Commissioner Douglas.
So I will say that while our process is to seek approval or consensuses of 50% or more of the people on a street to pave it, and Ms. Donahue said this earlier, that is not a requirement. And there could come a day when we realize that the cost of maintaining these dirt roads over the course of time, and not only the cost of maintaining them, but the environmental impacts are such that it would be to our advantage to pave them despite perhaps objections to them. So that possibility exists out there across those three miles of unpaved roads that we have here in Royal Oak.
I'll just say, I don't know that that's completely necessary to move forward with such a analysis, and I'll give my reasoning. One, it's just sort of kind of picking on the dirt roads a little bit, because you can argue that Vincetta costs more because of the bridges. You can ask, you can say that Fourth Street costs more because of the medians. You have to mow them, and you have to maintain the rain gardens and all of that. So I don't know that I'd want to look at it in the context of, you know, going out and seeing what the environmental impact is, and without even understanding what such a study would take, and how much it would cost, and all of those things to do it. I know that, you know, we are at a 40% level right now, maybe close to 50 down the road. If the people on any one of those 3.1 miles of dirt roads want to come to us with a 60% whatever, or 50, and we want to look at it, I think then we would try to have staff say, "Well, do we have an idea for this particular road, what the environmental impact would be?" I don't know that we need to just go do it unless someone's petitioning us. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be clear. I'm not suggesting that this is going to impact any decision today, tomorrow, et cetera. I think it's just to help us make better decisions in the future if this comes before us again, when it comes to budgeting, what we need to allocate to maintaining these unimproved roads in the city. This is just for purely educational purposes, which is why it's a 90-day window. This would not impact at all a decision that's made about Mount Vernon. You know, the Mount Vernon decision will end tonight, and this will just give us information for the future and for future commissions to rely upon to know what it does, what is the actual expense of maintaining an unimproved road within the city. So I think it's just a purely educational effort that would be beneficial to us as we make decisions about many roads within our city.
I mean, I think my point was, I don't know, that we need to, if we get another one of these that come up, then we can look at that particular road then, as opposed to going and doing a research project on 3.1 road, just because I think that, you know, staff is thin right now, and I wouldn't want to task them with something that I'm not going to act on. If I get this information, I'm not going to act on it. So therefore, why task them? Now, if it was, hey, you know, another dirt road down the road got a 60% petition, or 55% or whatever, then I think you bring up a really good point. I would rather then say at 1 and 2, say, "Hey, can you come back next time and let me know for this particular road, how much it's costing us above and beyond if it were paved," and then do that net present value. I'm going to tell you, when we dealt with Mount Vernon before Commissioner Douglas and I, we did look at some of this information off the cuff. We had DPS give us some information about chip sealing and all of that. And they do cost more, without a doubt. There's more maintenance costs to managing the dirt road. It's sometimes difficult to plow back there when you have the irregularities. I think the residents on those roads know that, and they tolerate a little bit of some service constraints. But in the end, when you look at the net present value of dumping in $500,000 of the city's funding, I mean, you're talking decades and decades and decades to get that paid back, based on my understanding of what that chip seal would cost, or the, you know, or what the extra costs are we're paying to maintain the dirt road. But we are an entity that should be around for millennia. You know, we're not a business that looks at it, you know, 10 years. You know, we do have a, you know, should be looking out 100 years, like with our tree planting program. But, so for me, I appreciate the sentiment. I'm not saying you're wrong. I just am crawling back to my extra financial practical Mayor Fournier rule, and that's just my input. I know it annoys you guys, but, you know. You got a financial guy up here.
It's difficult to hear you. The only two people I've got to hear about is this lady and this lady here.
Okay. Thank you.
You need to speak into the mic a little bit.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you. I've got to talk to my colleagues, too, so it's a challenge. But thank you for that feedback. Okay. So there's a motion on the table.
No.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Anybody else want to, anyone else want to talk to the motion at all, discuss it? All right.
I'll speak to it. I agree with you about the environmental study. I don't know if we need that just at this time. But I do really would like to have us look at what, what was the first part of yours?
Review of the.
The notice. The notice. Because we all were expecting the whole street to show up and speak to it in some fashion. And if the notice is saying, "Stay home if you agree with it," then that really doesn't help with our decision-making.
I'm going to ask Ms. Donahue to jump in on this, to say what the notice, I mean, we heard secondhand from somebody at Public Comment, and maybe Mr. Grotowski, while she's pulling that up, has something to say as well.
I can, I have the notice here in front of me, and I can explain why the notice says what it says.
Okay.
If I may. So the notice says that, "Take notice. Commission will meet on whatever date in City Hall for the purpose of hearing objections to the necessity of making such public improvements." And then it goes on for some other stuff. But that is based off the language taken directly from state law, which basically says, "You shall set a public hearing to hear objections to the necessity or the public need of the project." Doesn't mean that we can't explore better language to make it more inclusive. So anybody, whether they're for or against, is welcome to come and comment. But historically, that's why the notice says that, because it's directly derived from the language in state law.
Okay. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to Commissioner Herzog's point, I'm not looking for environmental study by the means. I just want to know, like, what chemicals we're spraying on a road. So just to give us a general overview of, I think our DPS, I think Mr. Grotowski said last time, we spray something like once a year on the roads.
I know that we used to do that. And my understanding is they stopped that practice. They used to spray some sort of oil.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly what it was, probably decades ago now. My understanding is that it's up to each street. If they want to bring a service company in to spray it a couple times a year for dust control, they can do that. But I, that's news to me, I guess. DPS is doing it.
Yeah. I guess, and that's why, like, I just, I'd like an update on it in general, right? Like, this is not, it's not environmental study. It's just like an update to the commission on what our practices are.
Yeah. And I would also think, too, that you could just ask, probably get an answer in five minutes without having to do an official memo that comes back to the table here.
I do.
I know, practical mic. That's the way I roll. Sorry. Commissioner Cheesem.
I just want to respond to Mr. Grotowski. You know, I think that language is not only, not accessible to people who were in favor of this, but I think it's not accessible to anyone who's not an attorney. So I feel like it might be helpful as we're looking, as we're sending out notices, to make sure that they're written in a language that regular people are going to understand the intent, because I would have had the same conclusion from that. Yeah, yeah. So I think, you know, if we're communicating to the public, we need to be communicating in more lay language. I think this is a good lesson learned for us, and we can think about how we might, I'm wondering if this is an issue in other notices that are going out. So I don't know how we address that. I don't know the mechanism for addressing that generally in the city, but I think it'd be something for us to look at.
I'll just add, I mean, I would be definitely supportive of looking at that language. But in the motion as it stands today, it's got some other things I feel uncomfortable with, so I won't be supporting the motion.
I also don't know that it needs to come back in a formal memo, but I just think as a practice in the city, it'd be a good thing to do.
I think you're right. I think you're right. You know, maybe with the new city manager, a new communication strategy, I would expect that, you know, all of those touchpoints would be looked at through a new set of eyes. Anybody else? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. We might have to raise the hands of the nose. Okay, four, no's, okay. All right. Now, just, we're good, right? Okay. So the folks that came here tonight to spend your Monday evening, I know there's a lot going on, a lot of fun stuff on TV, sports, all of that, and you spent it with us. Just so you know, the thing's dead. So the process ran its course. Mount Vernon will not be paved. Now, that doesn't stop another one of your neighbors tomorrow to go out and do the same thing, okay? Which they're allowed to do. But I think that everybody from our engineering department up here gave some good feedback on what's possible and what's probably not possible, at least while we're up here. We could all not be here two or three years from now, and maybe somebody runs on a platform of paving Mount Vernon, and they get up here, and it's a different story. But, you know, just rest assured that it doesn't look like Mount Vernon's going to get paved for anytime soon. So now we're up to 14, 14 times now? 14 times, 14-0. All right. But thank you for coming out.
All men, all men, no.
All right. So that brings us to proposed amendments to Chapter 64 Environmental Advisory Board, first reading. Ms. Barkman.
Good evening, Mayor. Commission. This evening I have before you is the first reading for amendments to Chapter 64, which is the ordinance that sets up our environmental advisory board. As you know, we've been working through a process over what feels like the last two-ish years to review all of our boards and commissions, look at the ordinances, and we're going through the process now of setting up bylaws. For the past several months, we've been working with EAB to address their bylaws as well as their ordinance. What I have before you this evening is only the ordinance. We expect that the bylaws will go with the second reading, which could be as soon as next week, if you guys are all okay this evening. Just really quickly, my apologies, in your original packet, we didn't catch that the red line version did not go through the PDF conversion part of the process. Carol amended that, and I believe sent you guys a note today, so that should be in your merged packet and is reflected online. If you would like a paper copy, I do have a paper copy of what it looks like. But real quick to go through the changes proposed, there's just generally a few little kind of, we're removing a word that maybe didn't really need to be there in the first place, and where we have it open. So we'll take care of those types of typo corrections. The number of members of EAB is the first change that we're making. So you may recall, this board is probably one of our largest boards, clocking in at about 12 plus two student members. Right now, there is one vacancy, and so the board was interested in moving to a smaller model. So this would be an odd number. Currently, they have the even number. So this would move them to 11 board members who are appointed. With their two student members, that would give them 13. Again, this way, making this change at this time, means that no one loses their seat. We don't have to uninvite someone to participate in the board at this point. So this is a good moment to look at that particular change. The second one is to update the staff ex officio member. Last year, we added a sustainability manager, and we've now updated and proposed this ordinance to also reflect that the staff ex officio would be split between DPS, the director of DPS, which is the current staff liaison, and the sustainability manager. The final change removes a requirement that they meet at least eight times per year. This is unusual language within all of our, that exists within this board's ordinance that we don't see in a lot of other ones, that it meets at least a minimum number of times. So the language that's proposed brings it similar to what other boards have, in that it would just be, they would establish a regular meeting schedule, dates and times, and all those kinds of things. And so with that, I'll take any questions. And again, this is, we'll see the bylaws with the second reading.
No questions? I mean, that's pretty clear. Math adds up if foots.
That's right.
Mr. Grotowski.
I'll take full responsibility for not the red line coming through. It went through when I submitted it, and then all of a sudden, when it showed up, so that's totally on me. I didn't want Susan to take the blame for that. Thank you.
Nobody's to blame.
An honest attorney? All right. Oh, I'm just kidding. I realize Commissioner Hunt is next to me over there. I was making a lawyer joke, and it did not go over well. No, but thank you, Mr. Grotowski, for that. Commissioner Herzog.
I just want to thank Susan for coming to the EAB meetings, probably since May, to talk about this. The EAB is very thorough, so it has taken us a while to get through this. We also had the students thing to work through, too. So we really appreciate the staff time working with us on this.
Commissioner Collo.
So that the EAB stops taking up so much staff time and remove approval.
Motion by Commissioner Collo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion. With none, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right.
We'll see you next week.
Thank you, Ms. Barkman. All right, that brings us to the last item on our agenda tonight, which is the Axon contract renewal. I see Chief Moore. He didn't get dressed up for nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you this evening is a contract renewal for the Police Department's technology suite. Back in 2019, the Police Department entered into a five-year agreement with Axon for a network of equipment and software. And that includes our in-car video cameras, the officer body worn cameras, tasers, interview room recording equipment, cloud-based digital evidence storage, and software as in tools for managing and redacting those videos. That agreement expires in January of 2025. And since that original contract, we added Axon's virtual reality training, as well as outfitted additional police officers with tasers and body worn cameras. This proposed contract aligns all contracts into one, and the attached quote extends the contract to 2030, which offers warranties on all the equipment and includes pre-scheduled replacements and upgrades for all the equipment, offering a cost-effective and efficient solution for the Police Department. I will note, this was a budgeted item under CIP number 2024-69, Police Technology, and the pricing for Axon's products and services was reviewed by Sourcewell, who solicited competitive bids for public safety video surveillance and equipment. And really, this equipment provides transparency and a less lethal option when it comes to use of force for all of our police officers in the city. So that's it. In a nutshell, there are more information in your packets, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has this evening about this contract.
Yeah, Chief Moore, we had a couple of questions at Public Comment proposed about, like, the interview room and the modems. Any comment on that?
Yeah, the gentleman that spoke at Public Comment, he brought up the Cradle Point modems and questioned why we don't use Clemis modems. Those Those are actually not supplied by Clemis. Those are modems that the city has to purchase anyway, and the cost associated with that is simply for the software to make the modems work with the in-car cameras. So we weren't buying additional modems. And then as far as the interview rooms, we have them now, so it's continuing the storage costs. And really, what we've noticed is we had to shift to an unlimited plan because, as I'm sure you're aware, we're getting so much digital evidence, not only from what our police officers have, from the police cars and body worn cameras, but really ring doorbells, um, business surveillance, all that digital evidence, and we're nearing our capacities in our current plan. So not changing any equipment that we have in the interview room, just continuing that service.
Gotcha. Okay. Commissioner Colo.
Chief, Royal Oak is constantly recognized as one of the safest places to live in not only Michigan, but the entire nation. Does this technology help you achieve that?
Absolutely.
Okay. And is this a good price for this technology?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we have a renewal in front of us. Commissioner Colo.
Remove approval.
Motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. So notwithstanding anything for the betterment of the community we love and serve, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, the will of the people being served, uh, until next week, I move we adjourn.
We have an excellent motion to adjourn by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. Any discussion on this important and critical motion? Commissioner Cheesem.
I think it's an excellent idea.
I have to break up my motion from two failed.
You're out of order, Commissioner Colo. All right. All right, notwithstanding any other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourned. Good work tonight, crew.